Good evening. At this time, if you would, please make sure that your cell phones are silenced and be advised that these proceedings are being recorded. For those physically present in the council chamber, and very, very much welcome you all to be here. It's great to have you here. For those of you that are physically present, if you desire to address the council on any agenda item during the meeting, please complete a request to speak form. They are available at the front entrance and presented to the city clerk. This is also available for the opportunity to speak for items that are not on the agenda when that time comes. Speakers who are participating via Zoom will be called on at the appropriate time. Each person speaking will be allowed three minutes. City clerk will be making a Zoom broadcasting announcement. Madam City Clerk?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. As of June 15th, the City of Grand Terrace reopened its public meetings. If you would like to participate telephonically and speak on an agenda item, you can access the meeting by dialing 1-669-900-9128. Enter meeting ID number 863-2536-5583 and password number 866-505. You will be placed in the waiting room muted until it is your turn to speak. You may also submit your comments by sending them to ccpubliccomment@grandterres-ca.gov. City of Grand Terrace thanks you for doing your part preventing the spread of COVID-19.
Thank you. So at this time, I will call to order and convene the regular meeting of the City Council of the City of Grand Terrace for Tuesday, October 26, 2021. Tonight, our invocation will be offered by Pastor Rex Arnold from the Centerpoint Church, and I'm going to ask that Lieutenant Lane from the San Bernardino County Sheriff's Department will lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. So if you would, please stand for the invocation and remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Let's bow if we will. Heavenly Father, we thank you that we live in a place that allows us to come together and decide the course of events for our lives, God. I thank you that you have brought each person here tonight. I pray that you would keep this meeting safe, Lord. I pray that you would give wisdom to our city council, to our mayor, to all the people who are gathered here tonight to decide the business of Grand Terrace, Lord. I thank you that you have brought all of us to be in a place that is prosperous and pleasant, Lord, and I pray that tonight's proceedings will reflect that. Thank you once again, God, for everything that you provided for us. And as you speak to and through each person tonight, as we go about the business of governing, I pray that you will provide clarity and strength. In Jesus' name, amen.
Amen. Thank you, Lieutenant Lane. Madam City Clerk, may we have roll call, please?
Councilmember Allen?
Here.
Councilmember Wilson?
I am here.
Councilmember Robles?
Present.
Madam Mayor, you have a quorum.
Thank you very much. All right, so first item of business, do we have any reordering of additions to or removal of items from the agenda tonight?
Yes, we do, Madam Mayor. Certificate accommodation is being removed as one of the recipients fell ill. And Agenda Item Number 11, the 2021-29 Draft Housing Element Under New Business is also being removed. And that is all.
So we will begin with our special presentations, and we have some really nice recognitions tonight. I would like to introduce the coaches from the Academy of Champions and ask them to come up to the lectern. Our Verda Asman and Lori Becker here tonight. Please tell us a little about your Academy of Champions and their latest accomplishments.
We're from the roller rink, really just down the street from here, Grand Terrace, Cal Skate, Grand Terrace. We teach skaters from the very beginner, all the way up to world-class skaters, which have just returned from Paraguay. Skating is becoming very popular, and there are becoming more and more kids and adults in our skating classes at the rink. Other than that, I don't know what else to tell you.
All right. Well, I have a little overview of the different certificates of recognition and how they read. There are five different areas of recognition, depending on the individual and their accomplishment. So I'm going to read those right now, and then I'm going to invite you two ladies to come up here and help me to distribute the certificates along with the council by having you call out your champions, if that would be all right? All right, so one certificate says for achieving first-place quartet at the USA National Artistic Roller Skating Championship 2021. Another is fifth-place senior pairs at the Artistic Skating World Champion 2021 in Paraguay. Tenth-place quartet at the Artistic Skating World Champion 2021, also in Paraguay. Fourth place, what is WSTOT? World Skating something?
TOT.
TOT. So that's younger girls?
Yes.
Okay. Girls Freestyle at the USA National Artistic Skating Championship 2021. And then an eighth place, again, WS TOT, Girls Freestyle at the USA National Artistic Roller Skating Championship. So these are wonderful achievements. They have on there, congratulations, presented this 26th day of October 2021, and they are signed by the council. So we would like to present each of our skaters with a certificate that befits their achievement, and we also have a lapel pin for them to wear, so that when they wear it proudly and anybody asks what it is, they can talk about it. It's the logo of the City of Grand Terrace, and they can say that they were recognized by the City of Grand Terrace, and then they can brag about what they did to earn it. So if you two ladies would come up here, and if my council colleagues will join me. So what I would like to do is I would like you to grab all this stuff over, and if you would call out the names, and have them come up, and please come this way. We'll hand you a certificate, you'll have a pin, and you'll have handshake, and then we'd like you to meet up with us there at the end, in front of the city logo, and we'd like to have a picture with you. All right? Our first skater is Evie Berg. Let's go have a picture. Coming and sharing your achievements with us and allowing us to celebrate with you. If there are any comments by council members at this time, please indicate. Councilmember Wilson?
Really appreciate your work. I know it takes a lot of work to be able to get where you are, and I also know that you're the folks that, as I got too old to be able to skate alongside my daughter, my granddaughter, that you were racing past me backwards at 100 miles an hour. So, thank you again.
Councilmember Allen and then Madam Mayor Protem.
Thanks, Mayor. I was down at your facility, down at Cal Skate, just before the pandemic with some family members who came to Southern California to visit with us for a while. And I took the kids to Cal Skate, and on that particular day, we were so fortunate because your team, or members of your team, did an impromptu performance, and we were blown away by that. You guys are amazing. So thank you so much for gracing us with your presence here, and congratulations on a job well done.
Madam Mayor Protem.
Well, congratulations. I think the last time I was on roller skates was in 1972, and they had metal wheels. Do they still have metal wheels? No. Those things fell apart when you used to go on the asphalt. But congratulations on all your accomplishments.
And I will say also, wow, amazing, the work and dedication you put into this, and your parents and their support, and your coaches and their support, and you're representing so well when you go to these world events. So one more round of applause. Thank you again for being here and letting us celebrate with you. Our next item of business is a California Office of Traffic Safety Grants presentation by Lieutenant Brian Lane, San Bernardino County Sheriff's Department. Lieutenant Lane, thank you for being here tonight.
Good evening, Mayor. Madam Mayor Protem, City Council. I believe it was two weeks ago at the last meeting that the subject matter came up on the press release that was seen by a lot of folks here in the city. And the big question raised was why wasn't Grand Terrace included in this grant? So I did some research, and hopefully by the end of this quick presentation, you'll understand how that process works. So basically, the Office of Traffic Safety in the state of California offers grant monies to cities every year with that application window opening in January. Their grant period runs October through September of every year, so it's a very early application process. We, the application for this year, this October's grant, was actually done in January of this year. To be considered to be eligible for receiving some of these monies, there's an application and then what's called a problem statement. And the problem statement is really more sort of like an affidavit, and it outlines all of the factors that a particular city might have within the population and the city itself that either contribute to or have some sort of effect on issues that could result in traffic collisions. And those are, some of them are related here. So it's just collisions in general, it's collisions with associated factors of alcohol, any type of DUI. Some of the information that's included is what is the traffic flow through the city, what are the vehicle miles traveled, what is the current population, how many retail establishments do we have that sell alcohol, how many drinking establishments do we have? So all of those factors are included in this affidavit and then submitted. A request that contain all the necessary documentation, then, generally speaking, as I've been told, will be awarded funding and be a part of this grant. I have not been able to find any specific criteria or any metric, per se, that has to do with regards to experiencing a number of collisions that need to occur in a city to be eligible for any of this money. So although our overall traffic collisions in the city are very low compared to other cities of this size throughout the state, that's not one of those factors. It doesn't have anything to do necessarily with the number of accidents that we have. So to give you an example, and I have on the next slide, I think I have a graph, but there are certain computer data systems that provide us with the information that is used in this process, one of which is SWITTERs. And I think SWITTERs was a term that was mentioned in this press release as well. But that's the statewide--
Integrated Traffic Reporting System.
Integrated Traffic Reporting System. Thank you very much, sir. I always get hung up on the I on that. And that is a system that all law enforcement agencies in the state report their collision data through, Highway Patrol, all police departments and sheriff's departments. That information that we have for 2020 was that we had 34 collisions reported in the city. When I did a check of our data system using Arcad, which is a computer-aided dispatch, I was able to identify 80 different instances where we responded to a collision of some sort in the city. And collisions range, well, we'll get into that in the next graph. And then comparatively speaking, so far this year to date, in 2021, we've had a total of 82. So we're on track to be just a little over where we were last year with total number of traffic incidents. So here's the data. This is taken off of OTS's website. The latest year that they have up there for Grand Terrace is 2018. So now, there's a couple of things that we need to keep sort of in mind here. Grand Terrace sits in Group E. There's a number of groups that are identified in there. They're all based on population rankings. So we sit in comparative rankings with other cities of comparable size throughout the state of California. And in this group, there are 102 different cities that are all in Group E. So we are rated against these other cities. This first line here, which is total fatal and injury, we see that there were 16 injured or killed back in 2018, which is a rating of 81 out of the 182. And 81 is a good number because it's actually very low. We rated very low in that particular rating. So where we are compared to some of these other rankings here, I think identify that we're actually, you know, doing very, very well in terms of us related to other cities of the same size. So they take into a lot of factors into account here. Had been drinking under 21, had been drinking ages between 21 and 34, incidents involving motorcycles, pedestrians, pedestrians under 15, pedestrians over 65, and whatnot here. So all of these ratings are very specifically tracked within this system. And again, that number in 2018, or in 2020, I should say, in SWITTERs was 34. So again, a very, very low number. Grand Terrace, oops, let me go back to that. Comparison data in Grand Terrace population, our population here was just a little over 12,000. We had 28 collisions in 2018. Loma Linda, in relation to them, their population is a little over 24,000, or was in 2018, and they experienced 112 collisions. And Yucca Valley, population in between there at 21,000, had 129 collisions. So those are all different cities within the same ranking group, just to give you an idea as to where they sit on collisions in those cities. So there's, I'm not a silver linings kind of guy, but I do like to look somewhat at the bright side of things, and that is, we do, in Grand Terrace, experience a very low number of collisions. And I'm happy to say that. And I think part and partial of that is that the people in this city are largely responsible, and many of them do obey the speed laws. And we have been doing a lot this year on our side of things in trying to really sort of highlight traffic enforcement in the city by a lot of proactivity. So I don't know how the numbers are going to flush out this year. We probably won't know that well into 2022, but I have a feeling that our numbers, again, are going to stay consistently pretty low. And I'm also very, very pleased to see that there is no specific metric that they're using in terms of, hey, you need to have 50 or 60 accidents every year to be a part of this program. Because I think it's, one of the other important factors is through proactive enforcement and doing DUI checkpoints and saturation patrols, we're able to make a significant impact and send that message home. So I would prefer to do it that way and try to stop the accidents from happening in the first place than have to rely on a high number of accidents just to obtain some money. So that's going to be our goal. We're just going to keep hammering that as a priority here in the city, and hopefully we'll see that keep making a difference. That said, although we are not going to be able to use any of the OTS funds for our activities this year, the sheriff's department was awarded some crime suppression money, money that we will be able to use here in the city to conduct a number of crime suppression activities. So those will be large operations such as DUI checkpoints and probation, parole sweeps, warrant sweeps, and traffic enforcement. And we intend on conducting a number of these between now and the end of next June. So we're going to take the opportunity to use this funding to do what we would have done with the OTS funding. This gives us a little bit more broad-based scope on how we use that money. It doesn't necessarily have to be traffic-related, so we've got a lot of different things that we can do with that. So we do have some things that we'll be planning between now and then, and of course, keep the city manager apprised as to what those end up being. But this is an ongoing collaborative relationship between sheriff's department and the Board of Supervisors, provides the cities, such as Grand Terrace, Loma Linda, and some of the other contract cities in the county, just additional opportunities to provide a higher level of service in the areas that we serve. So the goal is to improve the quality of life here in the city, and that is our number one goal. And we can do that in a variety of ways that we look forward to expanding upon as we close out this next fiscal year. And I think that's all I had, and I'll be happy, well, so I'll explain a little bit how they go. So we will have three operations between now and the end of June. They will include five deputies, one supervisor, and a dispatcher for 10-hour shifts, and it's all overtime-based, and none of this is being billed back to the city. It's all being handled through this grant. And a couple of those things that we can do on there, we can use it for homeless outreach. That's another big thing that we're very active on here in the city, so we can provide some of that money into those areas. Catalytic converter thefts are mentioned in that. That was a real big thing a year ago about this time, and knock on wood, that seems to be almost non-existent now. But those things have a tendency to pop up every now and again. We can do park patrol, bicycle patrol, gang enforcement, and we do have a gang team that is in the city quite often, but we can certainly concentrate their efforts here in the city as we have issues that arise and whatnot. So again, there's just a number of things that we can use this money for that will, the goal is to improve that quality of life here in the city. And that is actually the end of that.
Thank you, Lieutenant Lane. That helps make up for the shock that I had when I read the article, and it didn't list us as a contract city, and I wondered if the sheriff, the new sheriff, knew who we were.
Yeah.
So I appreciate you doing this research and coming back to us with ways that you will be able to increase some enforcement through some of the funding, even though it wasn't the one that was in the press release. So thank you very much.
Yeah. I was as surprised as you were, to be honest with you, when I read that, because we were already talking about how we were going to be a part of this. So we missed it this year, but we are definitely on track to take advantage of it next year. We're putting the pieces in place to make sure that happens.
Thank you so much. Any questions for the lieutenant? Madam Mayor Protem.
Thanks, Lieutenant Lane. You said part of that grant, because I'm wondering when the last time we had a DUI checkpoint in Grand Terrace. I mean, it seemed like we used to have them, and I never seen, because I know we had a DUI, I think in July, where the car actually went up on the sidewalk, and I think I know I was walking on the sidewalk, so.
Yeah. I don't know exactly when the last actual DUI checkpoint was here. That would take some additional research, and I can certainly try to find that for you and let you know. But it's been not since I've been here.
Well, with that grant, you said that we could probably do one?
Absolutely.
All right, thank you.
Councilmember Allen?
I just wanted to say thank you for, it seemed like you went the extra mile there, and I appreciate that, and working that money out and providing this extra support for us. That's all I wanted to say. Thanks.
You're very welcome.
Councilmember Wilson?
If I recall correctly, the Lions Club, they were still in business over there pumping popcorn and doing bingo, and that's when, the last time, we had an alcohol check, and it was just up the street, across from Stater's Little Ways, which means it would have been about four years, three to four years ago, somewhere in that direction.
Yeah, probably about time.
Yeah.
All right. Again, thank you very much for digging into this and bringing us the news, and you did bring us good news--
Good.
--with respect to what you can do. So thank you so much.
Yeah, you're welcome.
All right. Next on our agenda is the consent calendar. Consent calendar items are expected to be routine and non-controversial. They are acted upon by the city council at one time without discussion. Any council member, staff member, or citizen may request removal of an item from the consent calendar. Are there any requests for items to be removed for discussion?
Madam Mayor, we do have a public comment for one of the items, and that is the Community Benefit Fund Grant.
Item four?
Item nine.
I see City Department Monthly Activity Report. That's what the comment's about?
Item nine, the Community Benefit--
Oh, okay. So we can have the individual come and make a comment? We're not pulling it off for discussion, correct?
No, Madam Mayor.
Okay. And where is the individual who'd like to come?
It's Mr. Gallo.
All right. Mr. Johan Gallo. So I don't have a speaker slip in front of me, so.
I apologize. I have one.
There we go. Good evening, Madam Mayor, council members, and staff. Johan Gallo, 22808 De Soto Street, Grand Terrace, California. I want to thank the staff, council member Hussey, Mr. Melheiser, Mr. Weiss, and the rest of the staff that worked on putting this all together and helping me, because I'm a novice at all of this. And so we're really working hard to have the Santa Claus cruise and do the toy drive. And the whole goal of this, last year was amazing. We fumbled our way through this thing. We collected four trucks full loads of toys that went to Sick and Tired Sobriety, a recovery home for moms and their families. And they were able to provide toys for kids for the first time in their 20 years of existence. They were able to provide toys, not for just one day, with one toy per kid. They were able to do it for three days, and three toys to each of the kids. So to me, for our first time out of the gate, we were doing pretty good there. I also want to have a special thanks to Lieutenant Lane and Assistant Chief, Mr. Mahia, because they are willing to waive their fees and the charges that it's going to take to do the cruise. And so that'll save everybody, including the city, some money and give us an opportunity to do this. I also want to thank the Lions Club and the Boy Scouts. We wanted to make the event safer this year. It was a little dangerous last year collecting-- idea, and Mike Miller at Woody's was just overwhelmed, because the trucks just kept pulling in with more and more toys. But this year, thanks to the Lions Club and also the Boy Scouts, we're going to have designated collection areas on each of the streets of the route, so the families can bring the toys down, because part of the excitement in all of this was the little kids putting the toys in there, so Santa could give them to the kids that needed. So, again, I want to thank everybody for all the work. We're not done yet. We still got to get the insurance policy and a few other things, but again, I want to thank everybody for the collective effort in getting this done. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Gallo. Are there any other requests to speak on this item from the public?
No, Madam Mayor.
Okay. So, then I'll bring it to the council for consideration of a motion for the consent calendar.
Second.
Okay, so I have a motion for approval of the consent calendar from Councilmember Robles, second from Mayor Protem Hussey. Want to make sure I don't miss that.
The mouth.
Will you please call the vote, Madam City Clerk?
Councilmember Allen?
Yes.
Councilmember Wilson?
Yes.
Councilmember Robles?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Hussey?
Yes.
Mayor Magna Bo?
Yes.
Motion passed unanimously.
Thank you. All right, do we have any requests to speak on items not on the agenda? We do. Okay, so this is public comments, the opportunity for members of the public to comment on items not appearing on the regular agenda. And so, as a reminder, there are restrictions contained in California law. Let's say the city council may not discuss or act on any item not on the agenda, so we may briefly respond to a statement made or ask a question for clarification, but we won't be able to take up any item that is raised during this time. Also, we could request a brief response from staff to questions raised. Most times, depending on the issue, we'll ask staff to follow up with the individual who's come to speak. And then depending on what the issue is, the item may be agendized for a future meeting. So, request to speak during this time. I don't think so. No, I'm kidding. Johan Gallo.
You've been called a million times.
Welcome back.
Thank you. It's good to see you, too. I got some sad news today from Assemblymember Reyes's office, that two years of working on the grant that Lieutenant Wolf and I worked on for $175,000 for the city of Grand Terrace has been, has pretty much died. And so, what I'm here to say today is, I don't give up, ever. It's not in my blood. So, I've already committed to Lieutenant Lane that I will work with him however we can and do whatever we can, and let the city assign whoever they want to help us with this. But we're going to go for round three on this, and maybe third time is the charm, but we're going to put together a new grant. We'll work with whoever you designate from the city staff to work with us on that, but I'm committed to getting the funds that we need to revitalize not only the Citizens on Patrol program, the Neighborhood Watch program, the ALPR cameras, and I realize there's new legislation that passed in Sacramento that just ties our hands even more, but we'll find other things that we can use money for that'll help the city. And so, I'm committed to coming back and doing that, and whoever you designate to work on that, I'm happy to work with them. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Gallo. I appreciate the update, and thank you for not giving up and charging forward. That's wonderful. Any other requests to speak at this time?
No, Madam Mayor.
All right. So, I'll close public comment. Back to our agenda, public hearings, we have none. Unfinished business? No, we have no unfinished business. We've been on our game. So, we will go to our new business, and we have one item tonight, which is a first reading and introduction of an ordinance for organic waste disposal reduction. Eric Weck, Public Works Director, please.
Good evening. Eric Weck, Public Works Director, City Engineer. Tonight, we'll be discussing Senate Bill 1383 as it relates to organic waste recycling and reduction. The ordinance is on your agenda. Now, tonight, I'm joined by Ms. Lana Lehman from Alashire and Winder, and she'll be making the presentation tonight. I'm also joined by Mike Aragon, the Vice President for Burttec Waste Industries. So, without further ado, I'll hand it off to Ms. Lehman.
Thank you, Eric. Good evening, mayor and council. As Eric mentioned, my name is Lana Lehman. I work at Alashire and Winder, so partner with your city attorney. I have several years' experience in negotiations on franchise agreements and the drafting of solid waste and recycling ordinances and regulations, and as such, was tasked with the work with staff to create an ordinance to enact regulations in compliance with Senate Bill 1383 for the implementation of food and organics recycling and related, many related, solid waste and recycling processing and reporting requirements. Many of you, I know, have heard chatter about this set of regulations for a while, and for very good reason. It is, without a doubt, and admittedly by CalRecycle, the most comprehensive by far set of regulations and state mandates that have been handed down to all local jurisdictions in at least the last 30 years. And those regulatory mandates require jurisdictions to adopt an ordinance and start on the creation of enforcement mechanisms for 1383 compliance by January 1, 2022. To that end, a new Grand Terrace Municipal Code chapter, an entire new chapter, 6.10, is proposed. That chapter addresses the mandate of organic waste generators, haulers, and other entities that are subject to the requirements of SB 1383, and require them to comply with the new state mandates. Model language for the mandatory SB 1383 ordinance was provided by CalRecycle, but not until January of this year. Cities were advised to adjust the language based on their individual needs. Such adjustments have been implemented in the draft presented to you tonight, and the new chapter was shared with the city's franchised waste hauler, Burttec. As I noted before, SB 1383 takes effect on January 1, 2022. Soon thereafter, CalRecycle will start looking at cities to see if they have made due diligence forward to implement enforcement mechanisms for 1383 compliance. SB 1383 was signed into law on September 19, 2016, directing public agencies to reduce organic waste disposal by 75% and increase edible food waste recovery by 20% by 2025. It says 25% there, it's actually 20%. And while the law, I do want to note that while the law was signed into law in 2016, the regulations, which are actual, the actual meat of 1383, did not come down from the state until much later, within the last year and a half or so. And in fact, beyond the regulations, we didn't even start getting model guidance from CalRecycle until January of this year, and then some of that was even revised thereafter. So, we've been given a very short timeframe for hitting, we've had to hit the ground running, I'll put it that way, especially to make a January 1, 2022 deadline. The purpose of the bill was to reduce greenhouse gas emissions and divert organic waste from landfills. It's considered that the decomposition of such materials emit methane, a climate pollutant which is 72 times to about 84 times more potent than carbon dioxide. By January 1, 2022, all jurisdictions must have a mandatory organic waste ordinance in place. Additionally, all businesses and residents, as well as multifamily housing, must have access to recycling programs that capture food scraps, landscaping debris, amongst other organic waste items and materials. 1383 builds on a former bill, AB 1826, which went into effect on April 1, 2016. AB 1826 currently requires any business, it's limited to businesses, generating 2-plus cubic yards of commercial solid waste per week, and multifamily complexes with 5-plus units to recycle their organic waste. To some extent, Burttec has, and they can speak to this later, started those organic waste programs with respect to our commercial generators pursuant to 1826. Accordingly, the city, in coordination with Burttec, is continuing to expand the existing organics program that started with 1826, and then will be leading into their implementation with SB 1383. City has, and frankly, this is a bit of a summary list of responsibilities. The city will be responsible for implementing, providing organic waste collection services to all residents and businesses, adopting the ordinance to inspect and enforce compliance with 1383, establishing an edible food recovery program for local food generators. So, if you're a grocery store, or later on down the road, this will apply to restaurants and smaller food generators. There will be a requirement that they contact a food recovery organization who can provide those types of leftover, edible leftover foods to, you know, local food pantries. The city will have to conduct annual education and outreach to all generators, procure certain levels of recovered organic waste products, such as compost, mulch, and renewable gas. And there are very extensive requirements for maintaining records to demonstrate 1383 compliance in annual reporting. I apologize for the eye test on the bullet points here, but adopting this ordinance will mandate organic waste generators, haulers, and other entities to comply with 1383's regulatory requirements. Specific sections of this ordinance include recycling requirements for single-family generators and commercial businesses, both; recovery requirements for commercial edible food generators, as I described before; service requirements for haulers; certain waivers for generators, if you're a commercial business, that is limited, the waiver provision is limited to commercial businesses. If you're a commercial business that generates a very de minimis amount of waste subject to 1383, or if they have insufficient space to fit the number and type of containers that are required by 1383, there are waiver provisions contained in this ordinance. There are procurement requirements for city departments, service providers, and vendors. And then, of course, there are authorizations and requirements for inspections, investigations, and enforcement. So, basically, this proposed ordinance is the city's first step in creating a meaningful enforcement measure to comply with 1383, the type of thing that after January 1, CalRecycle will be looking for. I do want to note that although staff and our office have closely followed, really tried to closely follow the models provided by CalRecycle, the programs enacted by 1383 are so new, they're so complex and comprehensive, that there is uncertainty as to how the programs will actually function in practice. We're starting with the ordinance at this point, with the idea that the ordinance provides a big-picture framework of our enforcement mechanisms and where we want to go, and in not just coming months, but probably in coming years, those programs will get narrowed down through more specific and detailed measures, such as a franchise agreement amendment and further work with Burttec. Once staff and Burttec have performed actual implementation and work pursuant to the ordinance, we'll discover the need for additional fine-tuning, and that will be presented to you in the So, 1383 also requires the city to have ordinances or other enforceable mechanisms in place for compliance with CalGreen building standards and model water-efficient landscaping ordinances. Technically, your city is already in compliance with those, with those CalGreen and those, what we call Muelo, requirements. However, for ease of administration, for anybody who's going through this very large solid waste, organics, and recycling chapter, we repeated them again in here so that somebody administering this ordinance understands that there are these seemingly third issues that they may have to deal with. As I mentioned before, amendments to the city's current franchise agreement with Burttec will very likely be needed. In fact, they are almost certain. And to the extent that it's unclear how 1383 will apply in actual practice and impact specific types of properties, those are precisely the types of details that would be ironed out through a franchise agreement amendment and further negotiations with Burttec, as opposed to our bigger-picture ordinance. Also, in the interest of internal consistency in your municipal code, the city will in the future be required to significantly revise your existing quote-unquote "garbage" code at Grand Terrace Municipal Code Chapter 8.52. Again, that will be something that we will present at a future meeting, possibly in the next year. We don't want to be in a position where we have this new chapter, which is out of harmony in terms of its definitions and its program requirements. We don't want it to be out of step with your existing chapter. We want that internal consistency. So, you can expect that coming back to the council as well in the future. 1383 implementation will, with respect to costs, entail additional staffing and administrative burdens on both Burttec and the city, as well as likely capital outlays by Burttec. At this time, we simply don't know what those costs are, and probably will not know precisely what those costs are for a while. And as we work through our future franchise amendment and negotiations with Burttec, the costs of 1383 implementation are most likely to be recovered through a refuse and recycling service rate adjustment, which would be something proposed by Burttec in the future, and/or the recovery of a city administrative fee, which would be something that we would establish in the new franchise agreement. So, the staff recommendation before you tonight is to read by title only and waive further reading to adopt ordinance, to adopt the ordinance entitled, "An Ordinance of the City Council of the City of Grand Terrace, California, Adding Chapter 8.54 to Title VIII, Health and Safety, of the Grand Terrace Municipal Code, Entitled Specific Regulations for Organic Waste Disposal Reduction, Recycling, and Solid Waste Collection, to Enact Regulations in Compliance with Senate Bill 1383 for the Implementation of Food and Organics Recycling and Related Solid Waste and Recycling Processing and Reporting, Adoption of an Exemption from the California Environmental Quality Act." With that, I will note that we are joined this evening with a representative from the city's franchised hauler, Burttec, and I will introduce him, Michael Agin. If you would have any, do you have any further comments? And I know he's available for questions as well.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, members of the council, staff. Mike Aragon, Burttec Waste Industries. I was here just a few weeks ago, and we were having some discussions, but I think the overview of the ordinance is pretty self-explanatory, very comprehensive. All of the cities that we work with are going through multiple processes. The first step, which the city of Grand Terrace is taking, is the development and the adoption of an ordinance. The next would be, as Lana mentioned, the amendment to our agreement that allows us to do what we need to do to achieve compliance with 1383, and then, excuse me, the implementation of the programs. We will be looking at starting our program January 1, from a standpoint of education and outreach. Hopefully, early first quarter, we'll go through with staff the details of our program and how that's going to work in the city of Grand Terrace, and then determine by the city when that future date would be. Once we have the, we'll be presenting rate adjustments and when those rate adjustments would go into effect. Typically, they will be put into effect when the program, the real collection program starts. So a couple of weeks ago, I was here, we're talking about a rate review. That is for, that's our standard in our normal rate review process. The rate review that's going to impact 1383, we would look at probably second quarter next year, looking at numbers and seeing what's going on there. And then, the adoption may be, say, July 1 of next year, and the implementation would follow shortly after. So that's kind of the overview and the plan, but I'm here for any questions if you have of BRTech from a program standpoint. And I'm sure the city's attorneys would answer anything with regard to the.
I have, well, thank you very much for being here. And Ms. Lehman, I think you did a very good job of giving an overview of a very complicated subject, so thank you for that. But Mr. Aragon, I do have a question for you, because I think this really fits with BRTech. During the report, there were goals for reduction in edible food and waste disposal. And I understand, BRTech probably has a pretty good handle on the amount of waste disposal we have, so you would be able to measure that reduction to see if we were on target. How will we set a baseline for the edible food recovery?
Well, we have, generally, a lot of cities, that's one of the decisions that needs to be made, whether the city would like us to take on that program or whether you and your staff would like to do that program. We don't physically do the edible food program. We subcontract that out. And so it is a series of customer contacts and outlets where the edible food would literally be collected and then distributed within the city's community if possible, but otherwise in other communities, but that food would get collected and redistributed.
Okay, so with the first collection of it, that would be the baseline then?
Yes.
And then from there, it would be? All right, so my other question is then, in the other cities where you've implemented this, was enforcement carried out by the city, and did they get any kind of assistance from Cal Recycle?
Well, we haven't, these programs have not been put in place yet. Everybody is working on their ordinance and their contract amendment. We'll start looking at that, as I mentioned, next year. But from an enforcement standpoint, we go through a series of notifications and letters all the way up to sending certified mail in certain instances where we don't have compliance or people, basically on the commercial side. As far as residential, we try our best to, again, notify them and increase our overall participation. I will give you an example, and it's not a real good one, but I have three residential pilot programs, one in the city of Rialto, one in the city of Fontana, and one in the city of Rancho Cucamonga. They're based on quantities of homes on particular routes. So they average between 1,100 and 1,200 residential homes on that pilot program. Unfortunately, and we've notified them and whatnot about being part of the program, but unfortunately, I probably have, on average, 30 to 45 individuals participating out of over 1,000 notified. So our work is going to be cut out for us. We will have, obviously, that's a smaller group, will have much more intensity once it's adopted citywide. But our goal is to use the first four to six months of next year to really put forward a extensive notification program, community meetings, getting everybody involved, letting them know why, what, and how to participate. There will be information with QR codes that they can scan and see a video that shows, okay, this is what I do, and this goes there, and this goes wherever. And then, when the rollout of the program, there are some details to that that I'll be discussing with the city as far as whether they want kitchen pails as part of their program or not. In our pilot programs, I had the city of Rancho Cucamonga said, no, I don't want a pail, we'll just have them, because they have to bag their food in small two-gallon bags or up to 13-gallon kitchen bags, tie it off, and place it in their green waste barrel. By doing that, we avoid what Cal Recycle suggests is put another barrel out there and run another route. Well, we didn't want to do that. That would be extra cost for the city and just extra confusion on route day, having four trucks going down your street instead of just the three that we have to do now. Once that material's collected, it goes back to our MRF, and we literally have to fish those bags out of the load, open them up, and process the food waste. So the city isn't impacted by a collection cost, but there is processing costs that are involved there. I kind of got off and lost my train of thought there, but, oh, the pails, that's where I was going. So some cities, they make a small pail, and we deliver them. And it's lined with a little two-gallon plastic bag, and you keep it under your sink, and you throw your food waste in there, and then you periodically, once a day or once every few days, tie it off and put it in your green waste. Some folks put it in plastic bags and put it in the refrigerator, some folks put it in plastic bags and freeze it, and then on collection day, they throw it in their green waste. However, an individual wants to participate, but that's why sometimes the food waste program is going to be a little more problematic, not as easy as a recycling program where you just put your papers in your containers and whatnot. That's a lot, lot simpler. Food waste is going to be a little more complicated. But once people get the hang of it, so to speak, we're feeling very, trying to be very positive that it is something that will catch on, and a few years down the road, we'll be in good shape. That material that we collect, about half of it will go to compost, we'll mix it with green waste and make compost out of it. The other half, more than likely, will be slurried and sent to an anaerobic digestion facility where they will make methane gas that'll either power generators for electricity or gas back into the natural gas line. So we do have an outlet for the food, it just, it's a lot of handling, a lot of processes, and unfortunately, that's where the costs will come in. There's two components to the cost. One is the processing cost, actually, three components. One is the processing cost. The other is the collection cost that the city of Grand Terrace won't have to worry about because we're going to mix it with green waste. And then there's the administrative cost for all of, as was indicated in the ordinance, all of the reporting, all of the additional other programs, so that'll be a component in the rate as well. While it is significant, you know, we're probably looking anywhere from, I'd hate to even quote a number right now, but to give you kind of a range, probably with the processing costs and with the administrative costs, probably in the neighborhood of $5 to $8 per home per month. The commercial side of things, most of that has been handled through 1826, which, as was mentioned, has been now merged into 1383. But we still have work to do with multifamily and additional commercial accounts.
Okay, thank you. My other question probably is for city attorneys. When this comes back to us for more discussion, will there be more information about how the city's going to approach enforcement and inspection?
Very likely. I think once we have an idea as to what rate of customers are engaged in contaminating the various containers that they are given for sorting, or the missorting, we can determine at that point in time what type of approach we would want to take with respect to enforcement. I mean, there are definitely different ways to do enforcement. There are camera-mounted trucks at this point in time that literally take pictures of what's going into the truck from each barrel. There is also, and probably what's more commonly being done right now, is what we just call lid flipping. You take a random area of the city every collection day, and you flip some lids, and you look in there, and you see if there's any contamination, and that's where the education program gets very important. I think once we, once people are educated and we can see how well that education takes, we will have a better idea as to which of the various options, approaches we want to take with respect to enforcement.
Okay, thank you very much. Other questions? Okay, so Mayor Protem and then Councilmember Allen.
Thank you, Mayor. Well, a couple of things, this is a question for the city attorney. Assemblymembers and senators who came up with this bill, putting the burden on the city to pay for the expense of you guys, the lawyers, and everything else, how come they don't implement something where they're, a grant where they're going to reimburse the city to implement this? Do they have anything like that? I mean, are we just going to hit the bill?
I understand that there is a grant program available. There's a very limited amount of funds. It's a very new proposal, of which I don't have many details. I have spoken with some city staff members, not at this city, but in some various jurisdictions, who have expressed some frustration with the process that has been provided for trying to get any type of funds from the state. Otherwise, up until very, very recently, this has been, unfortunately, considered and presented as an unfunded state mandate.
So a gun-to-head state mandated? Is that what we're looking at? You got to do it no matter what?
We have to do it no matter what.
Okay, well, another question is, so businesses are going to be held accountable for their green waste or their waste. What about street vendors? Because the state says street vendors is allowed, but are they going to be held to the same accountability to make sure they recycle the proper way?
It would be very hard to track. I think that's one of those, I can almost guarantee you, that's one of those practical, on-the-ground questions that is not, was not anticipated by the legislature or Cal Recycle in putting together this mandate. You know, there's, if street vendors, they should be, they're business license, they have a business license. You know, we can create, we may, an enforcement mechanism that we may consider in the future is requiring certain conditions of your business license issuance that relate to compliance with these laws. That's one option, again, out of, that's one tool out of the toolbox that we may consider in the future as we see how this program plays out.
Well, what about the street vendors who don't have a business license? I could go, because I don't think they're required on some cities.
Now, I think you would turn to a very, you would turn to a very standard code enforcement process. It would be an administrative process, which is incorporated by reference into this ordinance. You could utilize and turn to your standard administrative citation process as you would for any unbusiness-licensed or unlicensed street vendor.
Yeah, I'm just wondering, you know, why the city's got to pay all this, and our taxpayers, you know, every penny counts for these small cities, and we could use that money for something else, so, pretty frustrating. I know it's probably needs to be done. I mean, I worked at a federal prison, they implemented something like this where they had food waste and everything else. But then again, you know, we have the manpower to do that, so. I just think personally, it's a burden on us, but, you know, thank you, I'm not here picking on you, I'm just, you know, a little frustrated what the assembly member and the senators are doing to cities. Thank you.
Councilmember Allen.
Thanks, Mayor. I guess it's a good thing we don't have street vendors then in Grand Terrace, right? But my question is about, well, first of all, before I ask you my question, I just, I had mentioned this, I wanted to make my fellow councilmembers aware. I had mentioned with the attorney earlier that there's an incorrect date in the resolution, and I just wanted all our fellow councilmembers to be aware of that.
Yes, I was going to make that as part of the motion.
Oh, okay, that's fine, then I'll let you do that. In Exhibit A on packet page 169, which is Exhibit A for the resolution, it gives the, you know, the requirements for the various generators, except I don't see anything for multifamily housing in there. And I know that Mike had mentioned, right at the end of your talk, which was, by the way, really informative. Mike, thank you very much, I learned a lot. But you had said something about how y'all were still kind of in the dark on multifamily, is that, or you weren't real sure yet on how, what the requirements are going to be for multifamily? Because I don't see here, I see it for commercial and single-family and, you know, but not multifamily.
Yes, under 1826, multifamily wasn't required to have a food waste program as it is for all commercial within the city. But under 1383 now, they come into that same responsibility with regard to not only their green waste, but their food waste to be handled. And we're not, we're not in the dark at all with regard to multifamily. Their multifamily in all communities present a challenge, and that challenge is contamination. But we are going to approach it like we have with every new program, depending on the space that they have and the requirements in each city. For example, some cities, you cannot put trash receptacles outside of an enclosure. And so if the enclosures are too small, then there are space limitations, and Cal Recycle actually looks at that and says, even for commercial, but primarily a lot of multifamily locations. So we're going to use a combination of bins and/or barrels to provide that service to multifamily. And again, it will be handouts and working with a lot of property management companies to engage their residents to participate. We would hope that if you're not going to participate based on the direction, don't participate at all, because those containers are not trash containers. They're set out for food waste collection. But that's going to be our biggest challenge in both residential and commercial, is contamination. That's what really thwarts a lot of programs. But we're prepared for that, and if we do see that, we are targeting those particular accounts. And through 1383, we have to do some extensive auditing and reporting, literally, as was said, lifting lids or bringing containers of material in and go through that material to see who the bad actors are and who's playing by the rules.
Well, thank you. And you had mentioned, I also thought that was a really good idea that you had about the small containers under the sink that are lined, you know, and all that for apartment complexes, and I thought that was a really good idea. Thanks a lot.
Okay, very good, thank you.
Councilmember Wilson.
Thank you, Mayor. Mike, do me a favor. Run through a little bit of interpretation for me. I see in page 172, I think it is, yeah, 172, let me get back to it because I just flipped it past there. Under definitions, which is usually where I go on these things, that edible food means, and then it's got a bunch of citations, you know, CCR sections and so on. I can understand the reason why you're concerned about contamination. Who's going to be the sheriff in this game?
Well.
And doesn't it also kind of give us a real liability?
Yeah. So what we're going to be collecting is not edible food. It is, it's garbage, and it will be used, as I said, in a compost or in an AD system. However, there are organizations that pick up food, and you pick it up from the kitchens before, it doesn't hit your waste container. But there are restaurants that have overages of, say they order too much bread. There are companies out there. There are companies out there that network, whether they're restaurants, supermarkets, manufacturers, and then they create that relationship, say, well, you know, we have these overages every week, so come on Tuesday at 9:00 and come and pick up this. So they logistically set it all up, route it, pick it up from one location, and then take it to another location that says, okay, well, I'm taking it to this particular food bank or whatever, or donations, and I need bread, and I need watermelons, and I need whatever. So they have a, the company that we are working with have a very extensive program. They've been throughout Orange County for a number of years, doing it just out of goodwill. Now it's actually a state mandate up and down the state.
Now, I guess, you know, at this juncture, just because they haven't been able to figure it out yet, that it's going to dribble down to residential.
Right now, it is strictly commercial for edible food. Boy, I think it would just be too problematic to try to get, go the residential route. I think you're finally going to get some real pushback. As was said, this went into effect back in 16. We didn't get the regs completed till the end of last year, and then they did full-throttle, hey, by January 1 of this year, you've got to be in place. I can say that many haulers up and down the state, as well as many cities, really kind of protested this assembly bill. Bill, to your comments there, you know, that it's an unfunded program. They asked us for our comments, how all this, and they accepted them, didn't do anything about them. And here we are, and we're left and we're saddled with being in compliance. And then if you're not, then believe me, they will come back, and your first step, your first spot will be at the jurisdictional noncompliant committee up in Sacramento, and they'll make you do their program. And if you don't do that, then come the multi-thousand-dollar-a-day fines that will come down. So we don't want to be down that, go down that path, so we're just doing what they say.
That's what I was going to ask next, actually, who gets the fines?
Yeah, the city will get the fine.
Oh, the city?
Yeah.
And then it, and it doesn't end up going to the state for any reason?
I'm sorry?
Doesn't end up going to the state for any reason?
Well, the state is the one who's going to find the city.
There you go.
Yeah, so it'll come through CalRecycle.
It's a fundraiser.
It'll go through CalRecycle if you're found in noncompliance and you do not change in any way your operation, then the state will come after you, being the city, and start to fine on a daily basis until you come into compliance. So, yeah, we're not, we're doing all that we can to prevent our cities from offering the resources and the programs. Unfortunately, they are very costly programs. As I say, I'd rather not do any of it, but I can't leave our cities in a compromising position without a program to implement.
That's because your tagline is, we'll take care of it.
There you go. Thank you, Mayor.
That's what we expect of you.
Thank you.
That's what we've come to expect.
There you go, and we want you to have that level of comfort. As I said, there was a list that was shown of all these responsibilities, and we would probably, and this is our discussions with staff, do almost all of them, except for, for example, one of them was, okay, you've got to approve an ordinance. Well, obviously, we can't do that, those types of approvals, but almost everything else, from reporting to auditing to the various programs, we can do those. Some of our cities said, well, we choose to do this and do this, and you only do these things. And that's why those rates will adjust, because if we don't have to provide some of those services, that cost comes down. But in many of our cities, they say, nah, just take care of it. And so that's what we'll bring forward, showing you everything as well as cost, hopefully the first part of next year, and then the city just let us know what they would like us to do.
Thank you. All right, any further questions before I open to public comment? Thank you very much.
You're more than welcome.
Appreciate your information, and again, I appreciate your report, Ms. Lehman. Are there any requests to speak on this item?
No, Madam Mayor.
All right, so I'll close public comment and bring it back to council to consider what they'd like to do with this item.
Madam Mayor.
Well, it's a first reading. So it's the recommendation is read by title only and introduce, and then there's the title of it. And so that would be the motion, is to read by title only and to introduce the ordinance.
Madam Mayor, as part of the motion, whoever chooses to make it, asks that they also include a revision. It is on page 166. In the recital towards the top of the page, it says, whereas on October 27, the City Council of City Grand Terrace, it should be October 26, and that was the revision that Councilmember Allen had identified, changed to the date. We'll do it again tomorrow.
You're going to bring it tomorrow, yeah.
Well, I'll make the motion, Mayor, with the revision.
Okay.
To read by title only.
Okay, and introduce?
And introduce. Do I read it or the attorney read it?
I will have the attorney read it, although one of our attorneys already did read it.
Yes, she did.
All right, so I have a motion, is there a second?
I'll send it.
Okay, so a motion by Councilmember Allen, second by Councilmember Robles. Shall we read it again, or has it already been done? It was read very nice.
It was read, if you defer to that reading, I think it's the exact same reading, I'll give.
Okay. So that works?
That works.
Okay. Any further discussion? All right. Madam City Clerk, please call the vote.
Councilmember Allen.
Yes.
Councilmember Wilson.
Yes.
Councilmember Robles.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Hussey.
Yes.
Mayor McNevo.
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you. So our next item is request for future agenda items by city council. There are none, so we'll move to city council communications, beginning with Councilmember Jeff Allen.
I don't have anything to say tonight, Mayor, thank you.
They pulled it at the beginning of the meeting. All right, thank you, Councilmember Allen. Councilmember Doug Wilson.
I'm sorry.
Did you have anything to report?
No.
Okay. Thank you, Councilmember Wilson. Councilmember Sylvia Rollis.
I just have to repeat, because it just, one of the things that I hear constantly since I've been on the council is the state, the state, the state's the state. Since we're a general law city, we're a subunit of the state, we are a part of the state, we're not a charter city. So whenever, you know, so being a subunit is like the state allowed us to have elections and do their work locally. Just kind of my peeve, thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Robles. Mayor Protem, Bill Hussey.
Nothing, Mayor, thank you.
All right, thank you. My only item that I want to mention tonight is that I loved seeing the teamwork of the PTA and the teachers for Red Ribbon Week at Terrace View Elementary, and thank you so much for the, to the Sheriff Department for your support of that event Monday, the kickoff. They sent two helicopters. One flew by and took pictures of all the children waving their red ribbons, and the other one actually landed, so it caused quite a stir, but thank you so much for your support. And that's all I have. So we will go to city manager communications.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. A blast from the past, what Mayor Protem Hussey was talking about, the unfunded mandates, and I think it was about 40 years ago, we were, cities were really happy, they got, and my memory serves me correctly, it was, I think, SB 90, and it said that the state, any legislation that they passed, they would, had funding source that they had, that was going to cost cities money, they had to fund the mandate. But that was 40 years ago, so I'll look it up just out of curiosity to see why that doesn't have any teeth anymore. But anyway. Also, I'd like to thank Omnitrans and their general manager, Aaron Rogers, who assists us in fixing our bus with the lift, and they did about eight other things, including new tires and springs, and they detailed it, and so it's back in service, and we're, it'll be out of service maybe next week for a day or two when they fix the air conditioning. So I'd like to thank them, and I know you represent us at Omnitrans, so if you would extend a thank you to them at the next board meeting, that would be appreciated by staff. The council subcommittee for the National Orange Show, we have, which is council members Robles and Wilson and staff will be meeting there at 4:00 over at NOS to get a tour with the promoters and trying to help the sound that really plagues the city of Grand Terrace from their concerts. Councilmember Robles, as I mentioned last week, has agreed to let us put a monitor there at her house, and so hopefully we'll get some results. We think Mr. Weiss has been doing a really good job coordinating with the promoters and trying to help us all develop a plan that, because I know that the city council takes us very seriously in Grand Terrace, that we try and help our residents, and so we're willing and wanting to find out why the noise comes our way and not to some of the other communities. And so we want to make sure that we're being treated fairly, and we'll give a report back in two weeks after our tour tomorrow. And I think that is all I have. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
All right, thank you, Mr. Milheiser. We will be recessing to closed session. Council will meet in closed session with one item, conference with real property negotiators pursuant to Government Code Section 54956.8. The property under negotiation is APN 0276-213-47-000. City negotiator, Michael Milheiser, interim city manager. Adrian Guerra, city attorney. Negotiating parties are to be determined, and under negotiation is price and terms of payment. So if you, thank you all for being here and accessing via Zoom. If you are not here when we come back from closed session to report out, our next regular city council meeting will be held on Tuesday, November 9, 2020, at 6:00 PM. So any request to have an item placed on future agenda must be made in writing and submitted to the city clerk's office, and the request will be processed in accordance with council procedures. So at this time, we are in recess. Well, hello, we'll reconvene to open session. Council met in closed session to discuss one item, conference with real property negotiators pursuant to Government Code Section 54956.8. There are no reportable actions, we do give direction to staff. So at this time, we will adjourn to our next regular city council meeting, which will be held on Tuesday, November 9, 2021, at 6:00 PM. Any request to have an item placed on a future agenda must be made in writing and submitted to the city clerk's office, and the request will be processed in accordance with council procedures. So thank you all for your attendance and attention tonight. We are adjourned.